Good morning.
Good morning.
No, we have one date. Yeah, still on it.
Great, great.
Great. Oh, that was hot. Ooh, that's hot. Okay. So it should warm up here just a little bit. That thermostat was on the wrong day. We don't run the heat very warm on a Monday. We do run it warmer on a Sunday. It was set to Monday for some reason. So anyway, it's kicked on now, so the kids should have warm rooms as well. Also, the sound is turned off for everybody who was streaming beforehand. You enjoyed the entire opening with no sound. We are on Acts, Chapter 8. So Saul had approved the execution of Stephen. Philip was out preaching in Samaria, and doing amazing works in the Spirit. And now we get this guy named Simon coming onto the scene. But there was a man named Simon who had previously practiced magic in the city, and amazed the people of Samaria, saying that he himself was somebody great. They all paid attention to him, from the least to the greatest, saying, "This man is the power of God that is called great." And they paid attention to him because for a long time he had amazed them with his magic. But when they believed Philip as he preached good news about the kingdom of God in the name of Jesus Christ, they were baptized, both men and women. Even Simon himself believed, and after being baptized, he continued with Philip. And seeing signs of great miracles formed, he was amazed. We're now 8, Chapter, or verse 14. Now, when the apostles at Jerusalem heard that Samaria had received the word of God, they sent to them Peter and John, who came down and prayed for them that they might receive the Holy Spirit, for he had not yet fallen on any of them; but they had only been baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus. Then they laid their hands on them, and they received the Holy Spirit. Now, when Simon saw that the Spirit was given through the laying on of the apostles' hands, he offered them money, saying, "Give me this power also, so that anyone on whom I lay my hands may receive the Holy Spirit." But Peter said to him, "May your silver perish with you, because you thought you could obtain the gift of God with money. You have neither heart nor lot in this matter, for your heart is not right before God. Repent, therefore, of this wickedness of your sins, and pray to the Lord that, if possible, the intent of your heart may be forgiving you; for I see that you are in the gall of bitterness and in the bond of iniquity." And Simon answered, "Pray for me to the Lord that nothing of what you have said may come upon me." Now, when they had testified and spoken the word of the Lord, they returned to Jerusalem, preaching the gospel to many villages of the Samaritans. All right. Any questions?
What happened to Simon Ephesus?
That is a great question, one of which I looked up six weeks ago, and I've since forgotten. We are on session 21, by the way.
I guess what to say is like six days left.
Um, no. There's a heresy, this heresy is named after him. Now I gotta look it up again.
Simony?
Yeah, Simony is named after him.
Hopefully Simon changed his way of thinking.
While you're looking it up, can you refresh me what Simony is?
So Simony, also pronounced Semeney, is buying the grace of God. This is what Luther attacks the selling of indulgenceism on. It is a grave offense in the church. But the church had been basically nod-nod, weak at it for a while. If you ran afoul of the church and you had enough money, you could buy off your local bishop, right? Or if you were in trouble with the local bishop, buy off the guy that was ahead of you. It happened, and it scandalized the church when it happened. It was called Semeney when it happened, but it still happened. And so it was... At its heart, you can make the argument that all works righteousness is just a form of this. You're just buying off God in a different way, right? You're earning forgiveness in a different way. You're earning your salvation in a different way.
Or we think we are, but we're not really.
What?
I mean, we just think we are, but we're not really.
Right, yeah, you can't buy it. You can't buy the forgiveness of Christ. Like, nobody in the Gospels gives money to Jesus for forgiveness, right?
And there were some real rich people in tribe. And he said, "It's not for sale."
Herod wanted him to perform miracles, because he had heard that Jesus had turned water into wine. And when Jesus refused, he sent him back to Pilate. He got tired of him, right?
He wanted him to walk on water.
What?
Herod wanted him to walk on water.
Well, he wanted to do something, right? Yeah. So I Googled Simon, and the Google AI overview says that he is believed to have not come back to the faith, but potentially was the founder of what is known as Gnosticism. I can't tell you one way or another.
That answers the questions to me. I wasn't sure how to mark that verse, how to highlight that verse, what color to use.
I mean...
Well, I used the coloring system so I could identify different verses.
Without seeing what sources the AI is citing for that, like if it's citing some early church fathers or not, if it's citing later church fathers, we don't know. Citing early church fathers, probably. But anyway, so this is Philip the Deacon. Right? Philip the Deacon has been preaching in the city of Samaria, which is the capital in the region of Samaria. Samaria is adjoining to Israel. They're basically cousins. It goes back to the Babylonian captivity and who the Babylonians had moved into the area, right? Most of them practiced what they would call Judaism. But we also know that they argued with the Jews about where to worship, and things like that. So, and I mean, when I say they're cousins, because like, generation, I mean, people have been moved in, but they had intermarried over time with those who were left by the Assyrians, the Babylonians as well. So he's there, he's preaching, Philip is preaching there. And there's this guy named Simon. Now, notice what they say about Simon. "They all paid attention to him, from the least to the greatest, saying, 'This man is the power of God that is called great.'" And they paid attention to him because for a long time he had amazed them with his magic. But when they believed Philip as he preached good news about the kingdom of God in the name of Jesus Christ, they were baptized, both men and women. Even Simon himself believed, and after being baptized, he continued with Philip. And seeing signs of great miracles formed, he was amazed. We're now 8, Chapter, or verse 14. "Now, when the apostles at Jerusalem heard that Samaria had received the word of God, they sent to them Peter and John, who came down and prayed for them that they might receive the Holy Spirit, for he had not yet fallen on any of them; but they had only been baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus. Then they laid their hands on them, and they received the Holy Spirit. Now, when Simon saw that the Spirit was given through the laying on of the apostles' hands, he offered them money, saying, 'Give me this power also, so that anyone on whom I lay my hands may receive the Holy Spirit.' But Peter said to him, 'May your silver perish with you, because you thought you could obtain the gift of God with money. You have neither part nor lot in this matter, for your heart is not right before God. Repent, therefore, of this wickedness of your sins, and pray to the Lord that, if possible, the intent of your heart may be forgiving you; for I see that you are in the gall of bitterness and in the bond of iniquity.'" And Simon answered, "Pray for me to the Lord that nothing of what you have said may come upon me." Now, when they had testified and spoken the word of the Lord, they returned to Jerusalem, preaching the gospel to many villages of the Samaritans. All right. Any questions?
What happened to Simon Ephesus?
That is a great question, one of which I looked up six weeks ago, and I've since forgotten. We are on session 21, by the way.
I guess what to say is like six days left.
Um, no. Um, there's a heresy, this heresy is named after him. Um, now I gotta look it up again.
Simony?
Yeah, Simony is named after him.
Hopefully Simon changed his way of thinking.
While you're looking it up, can you refresh me what Simony is?
So Simony, also pronounced Semeney, is buying the grace of God. This is what Luther attacks the selling of indulgenceism on. It is a grave offense in the church. But the church had been basically nod-nod, weak at it for a while. If you ran afoul of the church and you had enough money, you could buy off your local bishop, right? Or if you were in trouble with the local bishop, buy off the guy that was ahead of you. It happened, and it scandalized the church when it happened. It was called Semeney when it happened, but it still happened. And so it was... At its heart, you can make the argument that all works righteousness is just a form of this. You're just buying off God in a different way, right? You're earning forgiveness in a different way. You're earning your salvation in a different way.
Or we think we are, but we're not really.
What?
I mean, we just think we are, but we're not really.
Right, yeah, you can't buy it. You can't buy the forgiveness of Christ. Like, nobody in the Gospels gives money to Jesus for forgiveness, right?
And there were some real rich people in tribe. And he said, "It's not for sale."
Herod wanted him to perform miracles, because he had heard that Jesus had turned water into wine. And when Jesus refused, he sent him back to Pilate. He got tired of him, right?
He wanted him to walk on water.
What?
Herod wanted him to walk on water.
Well, he wanted to do something, right? Yeah. So I Googled Simon, and the Google AI overview says that he is believed to have not come back to the faith, but potentially was the founder of what is known as Gnosticism. I can't tell you one way or another.
That answers the questions to me. I wasn't sure how to mark that verse, how to highlight that verse, what color to use.
I mean...
Well, I used the coloring system so I could identify different verses.
Yeah. Well, I'm saying, without seeing what sources the AI is citing for that, like if it's citing some early church fathers or not, if it's citing later church fathers, we don't know. Citing early church fathers, probably. But anyway, so this is Philip the Deacon. Right? Philip the Deacon has been preaching in the city of Samaria, which is the capital in the region of Samaria. Samaria is adjoining to Israel. They're basically cousins. It goes back to the Babylonian captivity and who the Babylonians had moved into the area, right? Most of them practiced what they would call Judaism. But we also know that they argued with the Jews about where to worship, and things like that. So, and I mean, when I say they're cousins, because like, generation, I mean, people have been moved in, but they had intermarried over time with those who were left by the Assyrians, the Babylonians as well. So he's there, he's preaching, Philip is preaching there. And there's this guy named Simon. Now, notice what they say about Simon. "They all paid attention to him, from the least to the greatest, saying, 'This man is the power of God that is called great.'" Okay?
But my heading on that section gives you a little bit of a warning, because it's titled, "Simon the Sorcerer."
So that is a portion of it, that this is not great as in God.
That's an example of your setting.
Yes, right? So he's not working through the power of God. At that time, magician-sorcerer could admit everything from what we could associate to like, kind of like a witch doctor, to somebody who sold incantations or spells, right? And the market place. There's a, that term covers a lot of ground. But people I've paid attention to for a long time, who is well-established in Samaria, who is well-known, and so one thing to pay attention here is the disruption of the gospel upon false gods and false practices. We're gonna see this pattern repeated, like Paul goes into town and people get upset, right? Was it Ephesus or Artemis? Because the silvermakers were in Ephesus, and they made the idols for Artemis. They got upset, because people weren't becoming Christians and weren't buying the idols anymore. And so we see this disruptive pattern. We don't often think of this, we don't often think of it this way, but the gospel is subversive. In a world beset by sin, in a world where our natures are twisted and corrupted by sin, we're not sin itself, but our natures is twisted and corrupted by sin, in a world where we are told that our natural state is to be enemies of God, the gospel is subversive to that. Not in an evil way, but it subverts the world. It subverts the message of the world. And it turns people away from worldly ways to godly ways. So a great example of this is, I'll use a pagan example, right? Socrates is... He's put to death. He gets the death penalty, sentenced to death, because he's subverting the youth. Well, how is he subverting the youth? He's teaching them to question, to question the reality around them, to question the gods, to question their parents, right? Not in an evil way, but to sit there and say, "If you want to find truth, you have to question what is around you." And he was trying to lead them to truth, right? And so he gets sentenced to death for subverting the youth. Those youths weren't running around tagging things. They weren't running around vandalizing things, right? Or anything like that. So the gospel is subversive, because it points us, well, it is the truth, and it points us to the source of that truth, the one true God. And it will, whenever anything that is opposed to the gospel comes in contact with it, Um, but we also know that they argued with the Jews about where to worship. Um, and things like that, so. And, I mean. When I say they're cousins, because like generation, I mean, people have been moved in, but they had intermarried over time with those who were left by the Assyrians, uh, the Babylonians as well. So he's there, he's preaching, Philip is preaching there. And there's this guy named Simon. Now notice what they say about Simon. They all paid attention to him from the least to the greatest, saying, this man is the power of God that is called great. Okay?
But my heading on that section gives you a little bit of a warning, I guess, because it's titled, Simon the Sorcerer.
So that is a portion of it, that this is not great as in God.
That's an example of, of your setting.
Yes, right? So he's not working through the power of God. Um. At that time, magician, sorcerer could admit everything from what we could associate to like, kind of like a witch doctor to somebody who sold incantations or spells, right? And, and the market place. There's a, that, that term covers a lot of ground. Um. But people had paid attention to him for a long time, who was well established in Samaria, who's well known. And so. One thing to pay attention here is the disruption of the gospel upon false gods and false practices. We're gonna see this pattern repeated, like Paul goes into town and people get upset, right? Um, was it Ephesus or, um, Artemis? Because the silver makers were in Ephesus and they made the idols for Artemis and they got upset because people weren't becoming Christians and weren't buying the idols anymore. And so we see this disruptive pattern. We don't often think of this, we don't often think of it this way, but the gospel is subversive. In a world beset by sin, in a world where our natures are twisted and corrupted by sin. We're not sin itself, but our natures is twisted and corrupted by sin. In a world where we are told that our, our natural state is to be enemies of God. The gospel is subversive to that. Not in an evil way, but it subverts the world, it subverts the message of the world. And it turns people away from worldly ways to godly ways. So a great example of this is, um, I'll use a pagan example, right? Socrates is, uh, um. He's put to death, what, he, he gets the death penalty, sentenced to death because he's subverting the youth. Well, how is he subverting the youth? He's teaching them to question. To question the reality around them, to question the gods, to question their parents, right? Not in an evil way, but to sit there and say, if you want to find truth, you have to question what is around you. And he was trying to lead them to truth, right? And so he gets sentenced to death for subverting the youth. Those youths weren't running around tagging things, they weren't running around vandalizing things, right? Or anything like that. Um, so the gospel is subversive because it points us, well, it is the truth and it points us to the source of that truth, the one true God. And it will, whenever, anything that is opposed to the gospel comes in contact with it, the gospel wins. Because the gospel is the truth. Um, and so we, we see this pattern, right? We saw it with the temple priests. Now we're seeing it in Samaria with magician and then we'll see it with the Roman gods. So we have the temple, which is supposed to have the worship of God, but it's not. Gospel comes in, the people in charge get rid of it. You have the local, uh, uh, God-adjacent religions, so to speak, right? Because people think he's working in the power of God. The gospel comes in contact with it, that area. It's, it's subverts the message towards people to Christian. And then we're gonna see it again with the Roman gods later on. They paid attention to him because for a long time he had amazed them with his magic. So, Pete, uh, Philip comes along, not Peter, Philip comes along and preached the good news about the kingdom of God and the name of Jesus Christ. They were baptized both men and women. Now, why would they do this? Remember, a few verses beforehand, saw the signs that he did, run clean spirits, crying out with a loud voice, came out of many who had them and many who were paralyzed or lame were healed, so there was much joy in the city. So the same issues that they would go to Simon for, Philip's doing and Philip ain't charging any money, right? He's the, he's the better deal and he's doing this not, he, he's doing this not in his own name, but he's doing this in the name of Jesus Christ. He's preaching Jesus Christ. Now Philip's a deacon. Servant, like Stephen. And Philip baptizes and then. We get this section of verses that trouble a lot of people. Um, they were baptized, both men and women, no, no, stop, both men and women. Why is that important? Well, baptism is the greater, um. Is the greater circumcision. Circumcision was only for men. Because it deals with a part of anatomy that only men have, right? Um, but baptism is for everyone. The. Anabaptists though are going to latch on to this for just a second. Well, I'll get to it in just a second. Even Simon himself believed and after being baptized, he continued with Philip. So he believed in this message of Jesus and he continued with Philip. Okay? So he is aligning himself with, with the church. This is gonna drive me crazy. Stay. Um. Where was I? Oh, seeing signs of great miracles performed, he was amazed. This, this is all, you kind of expect this, right? Now, when the apostles at Jerusalem heard that Samaria had received the word of God, they sent to them Peter and John. This is one of the reasons why we know this is Philip the Deacon. Because if this was Philip the Apostle, why would the other apostles have to come over? Right? Exactly, they wouldn't have to. This is Philip the Deacon. Um. They came down and prayed for them that they might receive the Holy Spirit, for it had not yet fallen on any of them, but they had only been baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus. So the Anabaptists jump on this. And this is a, this is a verse that a lot of Baptists and Pentecostals will use today. About talking about like infant baptism and things like that. Um, saying, well, hey, look, in Acts, they're baptized, but they don't receive the Holy Spirit. That comes later. So, um, the Anabaptists in the fifteen hundreds will latch on this and say, we don't preach rebaptism, we preach, we preach real baptism. Our baptism is only spiritual, it's only been spiritual. Now, if you take the verse out of context of the entire Bible, that makes sense. But when you look at the preponderance of verses dealing with baptism, Romans, First Corinthians, uh, Titus, First Peter, it's abundantly clear that forgiveness of sins and baptism are tied to it. Even John baptized for the repentance of sins. Right? Um. So. What's going on here? Why haven't they received the Holy Spirit? Well, one. When Philip is preaching and baptizing. He's not sent there by the apostles. He, he goes there because of the persecution. So there could be this idea that, you know, you just go, you just get to go and do your own thing in the church. Whoever wants to do whatever, does that. Understand that. But when the apostles come along, they can, by laying their hands on, and those people receiving the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit in power, by the way. I want to be very clear about that. The Holy Spirit in power. Because they believed beforehand, no one can say Jesus is Lord without the Holy Spirit. It is a confirmation of the message that Philip preached to them and that there is one holy Christian apostolic church. It doesn't need a special blessing. Now, again, the Romans latch on to this and like, see, you have to have Peter, right? Like, again, explain Thomas. Um. But it is, it is a confirmation of the message that Philip has preached to the people. That it is true and that this is the same reason that the apostles preached in Jerusalem. Makes sense? Okay, well, you all are staring at me like.
It, it makes sense if you don't think about it too much. When you start thinking about it too much, it doesn't make sense anymore because your reason is being involved. And, and which is why I think Martin Luther was correct when he said, leave that to other people who are much smarter than me. I have to believe and go from there.
I won't fall through faith.
It is through faith, right? The power of the Holy Spirit throughout Acts confirms the gospel preaching. That is all that the power of the Holy, I mean, that is the role of the Holy Spirit. In the same way, that the entire purpose of Joseph is to keep his dad alive when the famine hits. I know there's movies of it, my kids love the movie Joseph, they, they watch it all the time, right? Um, but the purpose of Joseph is to keep Israel alive and therefore keep the promise alive. This is one of the reasons why Joseph says, you meant it for evil, God meant it for good, right? Not to demote the Holy Spirit, but the purpose of the Holy Spirit working powerfully in the book of Acts is to point back to the message that is being preached. It is Christ in Him crucified. So. We don't go out and seek the power of the Holy Spirit. We're not Simon, alright? God gives it to who God gives it to. And to be quite frank, if you had the power of the Holy Spirit for healing, there's a few hospitals downtown that you should be going to every single day, right? Um, what?
They'd love to have you.
They, they absolutely would. Insurance companies would hate you, but those people would absolutely love you.
But, but miracles, all those, those healings are also supposed to bring you into.
Yes.
Belief.
Yes.
They're not for the purpose of healing that person.
Yep.
They're for healing that person, but not physically.
And notice this, their baptism isn't invalid. They're not rebaptized. One of the questions that's answered here in the text, you know, Luke is writing to people who have lived after this book, right? I mean, the book ends with Paul on his way to his first imprisonment in Rome, alright? There's a question of a lot of people at this time of, well, those guys had miracles happening. Where's my power of the Holy Spirit? Am I a Christian because I've been baptized and I believed? But I haven't had the Spirit come upon me powerfully.
Well, healing might not be your gift.
Well, what, what I'm saying is, is though in this text, Philip is preaching the message, people are believing and baptized. That's the regular thing that happens. The irregular thing is those who receive the Spirit's in power. And Philip sees this, not Philip, Simon sees this. And the implication is, is that for whatever reason, hands aren't laid on him. And he offers to buy the blessing of the apostles. Because why would you buy something that they're giving out for free? But for whatever reason, it, it doesn't happen. Don't know why, maybe, maybe it happened on a certain day of the week and he couldn't be there or something else like that. The text doesn't explain that. Um. Now, when Simon saw that the Spirit was given through the laying on of hands, of the apostles' hands, he offered them money. Give me this power also, so that anyone on whom I lay my hands may receive the Holy Spirit. On his face, seems okay, outside of the pain for it, right? Why does Simon want to do this? So that people could receive the Holy Spirit.
It's more magic that he can perform.
And so he can get paid for it.
Money, money, money.
Verse twenty-three, for I see that you are in the gall of bitterness and in the bond of iniquity. Right? He's jealous. He wants glory to himself. What happened with the Nias and Sephira?
Dead.
They wanted the glory for themselves.
They paid for it with their lives.
They paid for it with their lives. Why doesn't that happen here? I don't know, take it up with God. Um. There, I think there's a note on there. Oh, unlike Anias and Sephira, Simon immediately asked Peter to intercede on his behalf and remove the curse. Alright? Maybe that's the difference, maybe that's why Simon's able to walk away. I don't know, when you get to heaven, you get to ask God.
Well, it's nothing wrong with the thank offering, but his, which is a response to what God's done for you. But this was, uh, let me just sweeten the pot and get where I'm asking for.
By the way, this, this passage from Acts is. So, there are some people, it's minority, when, when everything else is calm and theologians have nothing better to argue about. One of the things we tend to, to discuss is when she had the offering in the service. And there are pastors who very much hate having it right after the sermon. Because it's like, oh, they're paying you in response to how well you gave that sermon. Right? Gonna have an iPad up there, you know, tip. But.
Five points to give five. Well, if that's what they're thinking, they're missing the whole point.
Well, so, so like I said, it's when we have nothing better to, to discuss, right? And they're just over analyzing stuff, right? Um. And so they think that the offering should happen right before the sermon. At, at the latest part, if it's gonna happen in the service, it should happen right before the sermon. That way people aren't giving in response to the message, but they're giving before the message is even given. Now, the counter to that is, so the pastor sees the offering and he might, you know, decide what type of sermon to give based off of that. Um, now, this is, historically, um, the offering was not gathered during the church service. There was just, um, and you see this in, in Roman Catholic churches today, there's alms boxes. And you just, whenever you went into the church, you would put in your offering then, independent of the service. I do like that, I don't ever think that's gonna happen in my lifetime, um, of churches going back to that kind of model, but it's one less thing for people to worry about.
But it, but it has, because a lot of people give their offering like by the month.
Digitally, where you set it up just automatically or something like that is like the closest thing we'll have.
Yeah.
To that say, being not Roman Catholics. Um. So the Holy Spirit comes in confirmation of the message that is preached. Simon tries to buy it. And you kind of get this, this, um. Echo of Judas. Right, may your silver perish with you. Judas was bought off for thirty coins of silver at the price of a slave. Um. Now Simon has the right reaction here. That. Basically, please don't let this happen. One of the closest things we have, have to an apology. But this desire to steal the glory of God is universal, I mean, it's the reason we have the first commandment. We want to make ourselves God or we want to make something else God. So the first commandment is the first commandment because all the other commandments flow from that, right? Go back to the garden, Adam and Eve, seeing that they would be like God. They took an egg, right? Or she took an egg and then she gave it to her idiotic husband sitting there. I'm just gonna rag on Adam, I'm gonna get up, I'm gonna have to apologize to him so much when I get into heaven. It's like, you would have just done your job. Yeah, you had one job!
There's an old comedy line about the story of the garden meeting being a tragedy of, uh, a chick who didn't know a line when she heard one and a dude who didn't know when to keep his mouth shut. And the, the problem comes from the second part of the dude who didn't keep his mouth shut.
Um. Not to get off track, okay?
I'm distractible, sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
I'm apologizing to her.
So you can't buy forgiveness, you can't buy the Holy Spirit, you receive that simply through faith. Do miracles happen today? Yes, they do. They do. Um. Do they happen as often as they do in the book of Acts? I mean. This is like a thirty-year period, the book of Acts covers, you know? You can read it in an afternoon, really could. So. I don't know if they happen as often, are, are they as, as.
Maybe, yeah.
Focal and visible, I don't know. I think that's asking the wrong question, quite honestly. I think that's looking for signs and miracles when we just, we trust in the Word. And through the Word, there will be signs and miracles when, if they appear to us. Um. So they, they say the, the apostles lay on hands, people receive the Spirit, it's confirmation of the message that Philip is preaching. Philip has preached men and women, or baptized men and women, that's important, I want you to keep that in mind. And then the apostles go back. Um, Peter and John go back, as they go back, um, they preach the gospel in the villages on the way back, um, from Samaria. Now. Baptism is both for men and women. Now, an angel of the Lord said to Philip, rise and go toward the south. Now, an angel of the Lord said to Philip, "Rise and go toward the south to the road that goes down from Jerusalem to Gaza. There is a desert place." And he rose and went. And there was an Ethiopian, a eunuch, a court official of Candace, queen of the Ethiopians, who was in charge of all her treasure. He had come to Jerusalem to worship and was returning seated in his chariot. He was reading the prophet Isaiah. The Spirit said to Philip, "Go over and join this chariot." So Philip ran to him and heard him reading Isaiah, the prophet, and asked, "Do you understand what you are reading?" And he said, "How can I unless someone guides me?" And he invited Philip to come up and sit with him. Now, the passage of the scripture that he was reading was this, "Like a sheep he was led to the slaughter, and like a lamb before his shear is his silence. So he opens not his mouth. In his humiliation justice was denied him. Who can describe his generation, for his life is taken away from the earth?" And the eunuch said to Philip, "About whom I ask you does the prophet say this, about himself or about someone else?" Then Philip opened his mouth and beginning with the scripture, he told him the good news about Jesus. And as they were going along the road, they came to some water. And the eunuch said, "See, here is water. What prevents me from being baptized?" And he commanded the chariot to stop, and they both went down into the water, Philip into the water, Philip and the eunuch, and he baptized him. And when they came out of the water, the Spirit of the Lord carried Philip away, and the eunuch saw him no more and went on his way rejoicing. But Philip found himself at Azotus, and as he passed through, he preached the gospel to all the towns until he came to Caesarea. So Philip had preached in Samaria, people had been converted there, was everybody there a Christian? No, and the Holy Spirit was moving on to the next place, right? Holy Spirit was moving on to the next place. He's tell, he's told to go down a road, he's going down the road, it's a desert place. And there's an Ethiopian, right? So not somebody who's ethnically Jewish, he's a Gentile. He's from North Africa. He's a eunuch. That's important to keep in mind, so he's a Gentile and a eunuch. What's a eunuch? The eunuch is somebody who has been gelten. You know what gelting is?
Castration.
Why was it? Trying to avoid the word.
No, I said it.
This would happen with court officials that regularly dealt with female royalty, so that they would not sleep with the lady. He's a Gentile and he's been disfigured, basically, his manhood has been disfigured. So he has two strikes against him when it comes to going into the temple. He can't go, he can only go to the court of Gentiles because he's a Gentile. And then also, he can't be counted amongst the assembly because his manhood has been disfigured. I mean, that, that's Old Testament prohibitions. He has a lot of money. He has a chariot, so somebody else is riding him along. Probably has an armed escort of some sort then. He has a scroll, which he is reading. Scrolls were not cheap, everything had to be handwritten out. And you have to write everything out, the cost of production goes way up. The making of paper, or avellium, or papyrus, whatever it was written on, was not easy. The cost, the production cost goes way up. And he's well educated. We know this because he's a court official and he's reading. And when you read in the Old Testament, or excuse me, when you, when you read in the ancient world, you read out loud. And you read out loud because they don't have punctuation. Everything is just all together. So you have to read out loud so you know the words. There were very few people that read silently, I forget who it is, but, but actually, somebody makes a comment, they go and they visit this guy and they're amazed, it's one of the philosophers, they're amazed because he's reading silently in his head. So God tells Philip to go up to the chariot. So somehow, he runs up, he overtakes the chariot, maybe it's going at a snail's pace, maybe he's supernaturally fast. Heard all sorts of explanations, it doesn't matter, he gets up to the chariot. He hears the guy reading the scroll of Isaiah, which is a very big scroll. And he asks the man, "Do you understand what you are reading?" So the implication here is that the guy, you know, we're told explicitly, he goes up to worship at Jerusalem. So he's Jewish in faith. But he's a Gentile and he's a eunuch, so he's not counted amongst the assembly. He probably bought the scroll of Isaiah there, more than likely. I mean, that is conjecture, but it's more than likely he bought the scroll of Isaiah when he was in Jerusalem. So when you go to trips and you buy souvenirs, this is his souvenir, okay? And he rightfully says, "How can I unless someone guides me?" He might be a new convert to the faith, maybe that's why he's just going to Jerusalem now. But he's not fully understanding what is happening, what he is reading. And he reads this passage from Isaiah, "Like a sheep he was led to slaughter." And he goes, "Well, who is this? Is this the prophet, is this someone else?" Kind of very much a, a, a road to Damascus, not Damascus, road to... Himaia, right? Where Jesus then explains, you know, starting with Moses and the prophets. Philip explains everything about Jesus, and that this passage is talking about Jesus. Was Philip prepared, had Philip taken time to study, did Philip know what this man was gonna ask and research it beforehand? No, right? Philip was in the Spirit, Philip had heard the teachings of Jesus Christ. Right, how are we prepared to give us, uh, an answer in season and out of season? The Holy Spirit will give us the words, but we're in the Word otherwise, right? So Philip opens his mouth and begins to tell them. And as they were going along the road, they came some water. And the eunuch said, "See, here is water, what prevents me from being baptized?" That's an important question, because again, he has two strikes against him. He's not Jewish, he's a Gentile, and he's a eunuch. So he cannot be counted amongst the assembly. And not only that, because he's a eunuch, he doesn't have kids. Makes you kind of, you know, I wonder why this guy was reading about somebody not having children. He doesn't have children. He's not gonna have children. So no part of his family lineage will be able to become a part of the assembly because he doesn't have kids, and he doesn't have grandkids. Circumcision was for males only. And it made people, it made Gentile believers Jewish, but it was still their grandkids that would be fully counted amongst the assembly, the third generation, right? And so the natural question is, is if Jesus does this, and he tells people to be baptized, what's preventing me to be baptized? Because I can't go into the temple, I can't fully worship God, right? And the answer is, nothing. Nothing. There is no barriers to the grace of God in the New Testament. This is why the New Testament is the greater, right? We saw types and shadows in the Old Testament, now we see the fulfillment in the New Testament, with Jesus Christ. So baptism isn't to be withheld from anybody who desires it. It will stop. Now, when it comes to adults, we normally go through, make sure they understand what baptism is. So they know why they're being baptized. This is exactly what happens here, right? Teach us all about Jesus, I wanna be baptized, right? But if somebody comes in and say, and says, you know, "I wanna be baptized," and you go through that, he'll sit there and say, "Well, you know, I'm not gonna baptize you." They understand, they wanna be baptized, you baptize them. There's no barrier, it doesn't matter if it's a man or a woman, black, white, Hispanic, everything else, right? Doesn't matter if they lived a life of sin beforehand. You lived a life of sin before you were baptized. Even if you were baptized at a day old, it was a life of sin, right? Might not have been, you know, blank, blank and rock and roll, but... Baptism isn't withheld, it's the greater sign, and it is for everyone. And so there is this great... When I talked about the gospel being subversive, well, how were people ordered in the ancient world? Men had rights, women didn't. Roman citizens had actual legal rights, I mean, non-citizens had some rights. Slaves had almost no rights. The rich and powerful had lots of rights, because they were rich and powerful and they could at least bribe people off, at the very least. So what we would call class, right? Classes. There was a, there was a stratosphere in society. And the Gospel of Jesus Christ says, "There's no longer in Him, man or woman, male or female, slave or free, Jew or Gentile. All are one in Jesus Christ." Not that that suddenly I'm, I don't get baptized and all of a sudden I'm a woman now, or something else like that, right? But in standing before God, all are equal. Well, that's huge.
Yeah, it removes the barrier of the class situation anyway.
Well, who was more important in the standing before Jupiter? The emperor, because he's the emperor. Right? Who was more important in the standing before Artemis? The master or the slave? The master!
Or a person with money.
Right? The people with money.
To the eunuch. Different gods to worship for those groups of people.
Yes!
Like there was God specifically for servants to worship.
Yes! One of the things that upsets the Roman nobility, there's a, there's a girl, she's thirteen, fourteen, she's fed to the lions, she's killed. She's considered one of the first saints. And, and they don't worship her, but they, early Christians greatly revered her. They consider, this hacks off the Romans. They consider her more important than the emperor. Thirteen, fourteen-year-old slave girl fled, fed to the lions. The slaves, the Christian slaves, say she's more important than the guy on the throne. It flips their entire worldview upside down. Now, we live in a, a culture that is shaped by our government, which is founded upon Christian enlightenment ideals, that all men are created equal, right? If you had told them back then that, they would've asked what drug you were on. Right? Paul, remember, remember, I mean, even in the classes of citizenship, right? Paul's unjustly arrested and beaten, and he goes, "I'm a Roman citizen," and they're like, "Uh-oh." They're like, "Okay, how much you buy it for?" And he's like, "No, no, no, I was born into it." Like, if you're born into a Roman citizen, you are better than somebody who buys the Roman citizenship up, right? That's why I said, like, there's this whole stratosphere, these, these classes. And the Gospel says, "Love your enemies. Treat your neighbor as yourself." Paul tells Philemon, "Receive Onisimus back, not as a slave, but as a brother." If you look... This isn't new to the New Testament. If you look at the rules of slavery in the Old Testament, it is not the slavery this practice in the New Testament, there's no way the slavery this practice in the North Atlantic slave trade. If you caused permanent physical damage to your slave, they were no longer your slave in the Old Testament. You could not enslave somebody who was Jewish. At the end of seven years, you had to give them their freedom, or at least the opportunity. Now, they can sit there and say, "No, I wanna be your servant for forever, for the rest of my life." I mean... What, what we consider, you know, human dignity, that's incorporated even in the Old Testament. And, and so this message that I think that we are, we are just, we are so culturally inculcated with in, on one level is a danger to the empire. They don't kill Christians because it's popular. They kill Christians because they're easy to scapegoat, because they are legitimately seen as a danger to the empire. Now, on the flip side, we are still sinners, and we still do this. Our, to bring this to today, how we are conditioned to treat politics as us versus them, a zero-sum game, you either win or you lose, and compromise is a dirty word. I have never seen anybody on MSNBC or CNN or Fox News, now granted, I don't watch them.
Nobody else does either.
Or whatever, say, oh, you know, I don't, I don't see Fox News saying, "Pray for Nancy Pelosi." I don't see MSNBC saying, "Pray for Donald Trump." But the Gospel says, "If you're a Democrat and you consider a Republican your enemy, or you're a Republican and you consider a Democrat your enemy, you should love them and pray for them." You know? I'm gonna leave it here because we're basically out of time, I'm not gonna start chapter nine. But, um, so baptism, so Christianity is, is, again, not like equality as we wanna take equality, especially with like, we're on a fourth wave, fifth wave feminism, something like that, I forget how many waves. But it is a radical reordering of how we look at other people. And how God looks at us, and understanding that, the sin of the Roman culture, so to speak, we've just morphed it into different ways. We've just made it more tribal, in groups, out groups. We don't necessarily have the classes, but it's still there. So guess what? The Word of God still applies today, which is good, because it means forgiveness still applies today. Now I'm done. Any questions?